I'm going to call the meeting to order if we could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Monday. Our first item is, can I get a motion to consider an act upon the minutes of May 2nd, and May 4th, and May 23rd, 2022?
So moved.
Seconded. Is there any comment, or questions, or anything on the minutes?
No.
I don't think there's any. I'm just going to say at the beginning of the meeting, I'm not going to call for public comment at each item, so if there's anyone in the, on the meeting that just wants to comment on any item at all, just please put your name in the chat, and I will be checking that during the meeting for those comments. So if there isn't any comment on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number four is an appointment before, can I get a first motion to approve an appointment of Erin Herring, Herringan to replace David Gray, whose term expired, and it goes to 7/28?
So moved.
Second, and I just want to, before we open it up, I just want to thank David for his service on the committee. I spent a lot of time with him since I took over, and we, we worked together to hire our new librarian, and we did spend a lot of time together, so I really do appreciate his efforts as the chairperson of that, of the Library Board of Trustees. And I would like to welcome Erin. Are you on? Sorry, Erin, you're on mute. Sorry. Can't hear you. I don't know. Sometimes people have trouble with it. They will call in, or, but sometimes you might have your computer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay. Try the third audio option. Yeah, yeah. And thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. I'm very excited to get started.
Well, I appreciate you stepping up to do this. You know, obviously, this is an important board, and our community really values our libraries, so I appreciate you volunteering your time to be part of it.
Yeah.
And if I may echo that, the libraries are such an incredible asset, the public libraries are such an incredible asset, all the libraries here are, and want to thank David for his service, and I know that the library has met and strongly advocates for your candidacy, candidacy, and for your subsequent serving, so I just want to wish you well, and had a chance to speak to some of the other members of the library board, and they are really excited about your participation, and I thank you.
Great. Great. I feel the same about the members I've met as well, so, very excited.
Awesome. Alrighty. Well, if there's no further comment, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And congratulations, and again, thank you for stepping up to serve. I really do appreciate it. And I'm going to tell you, Erin, what I tell everybody who's been, who's for an appointment, you're, you're welcome to stay, but you're also free to leave. So don't feel obligated to have to stay on if you don't want to.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Take care.
Take care. Our next item is just for information purposes only. We are moving Peter Hood, who I see on the screen. Hi, Peter, how are you? I don't think he can hear me. Anyway, Peter is going to move up from an alternate to a full member. He's going to be replacing Charles Rowan, who resigned, and so his term will run to 11, his term will run from 11/22. And so this is just for information purposes. This is not a vote of the board. Hi, Peter, can you hear us? Can you hear me? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Peter, for serving on the Conservation Commission, and I know that they're a very active commission, and Peter is newer on it, but he's been a very engaged person on this commission for some time, as a member of the public. I'm going to go on to our next item.
Can I waive the reading? Can I make a motion to waive the readings of items 6 through, I guess, 11?
Well, I want to also just recognize Carolyn.
Sorry.
Oh, Mahoney. Care, I'm sorry, Catherine, are you on the line? Hi, Catherine. Nice to meet you.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
So this is for information purposes only, because it's an appointment from the First Select Woman's Office, but Catherine is, had filled out her application back, I believe, in January or February, and you have actually some really good background information, I think, will bring a lot to the commission. It's what I thought was helpful. So I welcome you aboard as an alternate to replace Peter's alternate positions. It is a very lively board, as I was saying before, and I think your background will be very beneficial to, not just for you, but also for the board and the applications that come before it, so I just wanted to thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm really looking forward to it, and yeah, you know, I think that I, we have all benefited from the Conservation Department and the Conservation Committee here in town, so I'm looking forward to giving back. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Kate. That's, it's, I think it's great to have some new people involved, you know, and engaged, and I've tried really hard to keep, you know, this in my newsletter, so that people, averages, average citizens get a chance to see it, and, you know, have an opportunity to serve in areas that they may have some interest or some background in, so I appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
Okay. And so our next item, you want to waive, Nancy?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Sorry to me to jump the gun.
No, that's okay.
Catherine and Peter, thank you for stepping in, and I do want to make a motion to waive the reading for items 6 through 11.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Nancy. All right, so it's just, item number six is Dan Lawrence, are you, yes, I see Dan. On, he's VP of Engineering Real Estate. He's going to present a water supply update of the 2022 capital improvement.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you. So do you have the presentation there? Do you want me to pull it up?
It was in the backup. Nancy, do you want to see it, or?
I mean, I think it's good to pull up, just because it's hard for me to do the double screen, but whatever works.
Sure.
Then it's recorded. It's all good.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So is it up? Or am I pulling it up?
No, you're going to have to do it. That's not my technological experience. Dan, way above my pay grade.
There you go.
So can you guys see that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I can.
All right, WebEx, you know, I think I've learned every program since COVID, so, right? I don't want to take too much of your, yeah, too much of your time today, but good afternoon again. I'm Dan Lawrence, Vice President of Engineering Real Estate, and a few other things at Aquarion, and I'm located in our operations center in Bridgeport. So get this thing to scroll. So our agenda today, which is here, includes a number of topics. I'm just going to touch on them, talk about what's going on in Fairfield. If you have questions, please ask them as we go, or you can ask them at the end. Your choice. So just wanted to give you a brief overview of our engineering planning group, which is located in Bridgeport. We have a couple different programs there. We have our utility programs, which takes care of our water main replacement program, our relocations. When someone wants an extension of the main, we have Carlos Viscorondo is in charge of that. We also do some cleaning and lining. When we don't replace the main, we can actually line it and restore some of its life. We also have a capital delivery program that handles pump station treatment throughout the state and the other regions which we serve, water storage tanks, regulators, and larger mains. When I say larger main, that's something probably over 16 inches, or 20, 24, and 48s and things like that. We have a planning group that handles our water supply, our planning for infrastructure, and we also do, and I'll talk today a little bit about ISO coordination dams, and a little bit about new services if we have time. And then we also have our GIS team within engineering as well. So just to give you a background of who we have. So just wanted to look at water main projects. So this year, we're doing about 1.9 miles of new and replacement main, and here's the streets, Beaumont Street, Mill Hill Terrace, Sturgis. So this is an area we've been working on for a while. We bid out a portion of this work last year. The prices came in really high, so I combined the projects this year, and we're doing all of this to this year. So very busy, probably making, some people, I know we've had some issues, but we always tend to work through them together with the town, and try to keep good relationships with Public Works. And if you have any questions on that particular, let me know. And then in 2023, we're looking at doing about a mile of a replacement main, a little bit of a, what we call a betterment, or a place there isn't any main, and we try to connect mains that have, like, dead ends, and to, helps the hydraulics as well as water quality. So down on Fern Street, Quincy and Roland, which is down near Fairfield Beach Road, if you look at some of the main breaks down there, we just want to get over there and fix a few things, and some of that pipe is probably under the seawater, so we're going to use high-density polyethylene main there. In terms of water storage tanks, we have a number of tanks within the town, but just to give you an update, and this is the schedule, and that is obviously subject to change, because we have to find sites particularly. When you go to replace a tank, we don't own a massive piece of property sometimes. So on the Pine Street tank, which is up near Mount Pleasant Drive and Pine Street, looking at around 24, 25, and these tanks are being replaced because of their age. Nothing more, nothing less, and they're going to get a little bigger, so it's a matter of making sure that works. The Fairchild Whaler Tank, which is on the golf course, and then the Greenfield Hill Tank, which is near the Merritt on Burr Street, so got a lot of plans there. We just want to make sure we address our aging infrastructure. What you're looking at, this picture here is a regulator. A regulator takes water from a higher water level, so it's at a higher elevation or pressure, and reduces that pressure to a neighborhood or a larger area. So this is on Lucille Street. This is done, this is a picture right before Easter, as they cleaned up and got it ready to look good. So that's kind of what that is. It's all underground, and we got an easement from the owner, you can see in the background, to put that. Right now, one of the things our focus is is safety, and a lot of these regulators were in the street, which causes all kinds of one thing. We have to get a police, police presence there to get in, and so we're trying to get them off, off the street for safety purposes, as well as disruption, so. And then we have a future one on Morehouse Highway, which is under review right now. As you think about pump stations, we have a number of pump stations within Fairfield as well of all of our systems, and there's just a couple of them here. Tungus, which is out near Candlewood Drive and Black Rock Turnpike. With this particular pump station, we actually purchased a home, so the new pump station will go inside a home, so that's going to be an interesting one. And, and then Jefferson Street Pump Station, as, excuse me, east on Eastern Turnpike in Jefferson Street. So both necessary. The Jefferson Street Pump Station serves two different water levels or two different areas. And then we have a future project, which is called our Hemlocks 423 Pump Station. That needs to be upgraded, and we're going to combine that with a new pump station that will be located at the treatment plant as well. On the water treatment side, and again, this is to get, just wanted to give everyone an update. We have a number of facility, interior facilities to address. The Hemlocks Treatment Plant was built in 1997, so if you do the math, we're, we're approaching that time where things start to go, it's time to, time to replace some things. So we're doing the chemical feed systems, those systems, the tanks that then deteriorate due to the chemicals and some of the process piping, so we're taking care of that. And then when you look at the different chemical feed, there's multiple chemicals that need to be replaced over time. So you have both the fluoride, which is probably the most difficult one to deal with, the phosphate, which is a corrosion control, and then down below, you have polymer, which is helps things settle, and then hypo, which is actually chlorine, our chlorine disinfection. So, as well as some piping and treatment improvements as well. On the dam side, you're going to wonder, why in the world did I put eastern on here as well? Turns out, both, we're looking at the eastern dam and the Hemlocks Dam, all at the same time, as they need basically the same type of repairs. Those repairs include addressing some of the spalling concrete. About 20, 25 years ago, they put shotcrete on the face of the dam to address some of the spalling they'd seen, and some of that is, now that's peeling off. So we're going to go in and address these spalling concrete, as well as some of the gatehouse improvements, which is where we take water into the plant. And a gatehouse also functions to do the releases, and then you have your spillway, and do those at the same time. So we're having bidding them, and they'll be in construction at different times, but since they're basically going to be good probably by the same contractor, we thought we would show you what's going on in the area. The last one, which is something we started when I arrived back in 2014, which I think is such a positive for the communities and Aquarion, is we developed new calibrated water system models, and we use them to develop fire flow mapping. Your fire department has these maps, and it just goes to show, you can model, and you can actually see what blue means versus green. So when you're being dispatched as a fire department out to an area to fight a fire, you'll know roughly how much water will be coming out of that hydrant at any given time. These particular colors are from the NFPA, so that's how that is. And we've given Fairfield Fire Department full access to this information through, through their portals. So with that, we also go through and prevent, prepare fire flow improvement plans. This is actually some of the area we've been, we've been just talking about. Bronson Road is up, up here, and there's a Bronson Road Regulator right in here as well, which is on that regulator slide. So we go and say, okay, what do we need to do to improve hydraulic capacity or fire flows? And so this shows what kind of one of the work we're doing there, within concert with the fire department, as well as obviously numerous people in the community. And then we take that information, and every six years or so, maybe five, the town has a inspection by ISO. And so each community has this wonderful inspection, and it includes a lot of information by the fire department. Aquarion is committed to providing a ton of information. So we go out and do all the fire flow tests of all the locations. You can see this little sketch right here. This is showing a sketch of a fire hydrant that's been designated by ISO to be tested. So if you don't realize this, we do this work, and the fire department does their work, that's actually impacting your insurance rates in your community. So we're trying to get the highest score possible. So we get these fire flow tests within five years, when they're submitted, that gets you the highest score. We take a look at what we've been doing in the system, provide them an update of treatment, tank pumping, and distribution system improvements. We go through in a debt update, the water supply and demands by each of the water levels, and you can see, there is multiple, the different colors here are different water levels, meaning that they have different pressures. You can see it has 336 here, which means that's the height of the water off, off the ground, and 240, so those, you can convert that if you want to, to pressure. And then customers by water level, water system band for the town, hydrant maintenance, as well as an overall submission, and we submit a report, and then we send that report also to the fire marshal and the fire chief. So that's my update for today. I'd love to answer any questions if you have any. So.
Thank you, Dan.
Keep it short.
No, I appreciate that. It's good information. Obviously, I, you know, the town is engaged, and we
Yeah.
were involved with what you're doing, but it's good for the public to hear this as well. Nancy, I'm going to open it up. Do you have any questions for Dan?
I really don't. I mean, I had, I had read through this. That was thorough. I appreciate the information, and if people have questions, we can direct it to this and to you, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate you being here, Dan, and obviously, people are never hesitant to ask me what questions are kind of in the office about anything, so.
Yeah, well, call me anytime. I'd be happy to.
You're very busy, and we know, we know your number and your email, so make sure that we pass along.
You can get to George, and one of us can get back to you guys, so. Yeah, very, very active time in Fairfield right now, which I think is great, doing a lot of infrastructure work, so.
Absolutely, and that's always good, because we, you know, infrastructure issues are important.
Besides the backup, where will this presentation live, or will it not? Just, just want to have to actively seek it out, other than this backup material?
Typically, we put this up on, Dan, you, we have this, so I'll just, I'll have Jackie put it up on the website. She always puts everything.
It's public information.
Yeah, it's posted in our Board of Selectmen, in which everybody can view, but we'll also make sure we post it.
Yep.
Then I'm sad. I don't have anything else, but thank you for your time and for that presentation.
Absolutely.
And I don't think, I don't have anybody in the chat, so no questions there. All right. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
All right, you too. Take care now.
Okay, all right, bye.
Okay, our next items, items through seven through 10 are contracts, and Attorney Baldwin just, he, I just wanted to mention that Attorney Baldwin is not in, on today. He had shoulder surgery this morning, so I'm sure he's feeling just great. But he did email to say that he's, has reviewed all of the contracts, and there are no changes. We have our purchasing director, Gerald Foley, and Executive Director of Operations, Angeles Papa George, for the next item. Can I get a motion to approve, and I'll just summarize, purchasing authority to enter into a contract with Van Zelm, Haywood, and Shadford Engineering Services for the design and document, construction documents to replace three rooftop HVAC units. This is something we already approved the funding for. This is just a contract for the Fitz House, and the amount not to exceed 28,800. Getting a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second, and I'll open it up. Gerald, just want to briefly talk about the contract.
Yes, so hi, this is Gerald Foley. So what you have before you is the authorization, a request for authorization to enter into a contract with Van Zelm. What we're doing is replacing three, we'll call them rooftop HVAC units on Fairfield Ward High School. These units are original to the building. They're basically end of useful life, and we're looking basically to get authorization or replace these units. What, the issue we're having with this type of equipment is, is due to the supply chain issues. We've really got to get ahead of it, so the equipment is approximately 40, I think it last count was like 40-week lead time. So in essence, this, we're trying to get this design work done, so we can do the replacement of the units next summer, during next summer break.
Very good.
Nancy, do you have any? I really don't. I mean, you know, Tom would ask if all the things that, you know, Attorney Baldwin preemptively commented on, so unless there's something that we don't know that's not in the backup, I don't really have questions.
Very good. All right, so there's no question, further questioning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is to authorize purchasing authority to enter into a four-year agreement with Milliman to provide the pension administration services for the town and the Joint Retirement Investment Board, and it's an RFP for an estimated fiscal, fiscal yearly cost of 146,000. I serve on the pension board, and so this is something that I know that has been discussed quite a bit in other public meetings as well, and it was something, the pension, they changed to Milliman, and they offer these services. Obviously, our HR department was handling these. It was way too much for them to handle, and so it made it more appropriate for, for the, for the pension board to be managing these items. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve?
So I just want, I have a question about it, or should I?
Well, we have to have a motion first, and then second.
Yeah, so, yeah, so moved. Sorry.
Okay, and seconded. Okay, so I'll open it up. Excuse me, Gerald, do you want to?
So what you have before you is, is authorization to execute a four-year agreement with Milliman, Inc., to provide pension administration services for the town and the Joint Retirement Investment Board. What this was, is we did an RFP back in 2021, and what we did is, this, this item you have before you was actually, it was, we're calling it an alternate, but it was included in the RFP for all of the firms to provide the town with an offer to provide these pension administration services. So we were changing over actuaries. We had one actuary, we changed to another actuary. So what ended up happening was, is this process was a little bit delayed in terms of actually getting these services in place, so that's why there's a delay in the RFP number. Normally, it would be 2020, if it was this fiscal year. So the firm that we've selected, Milliman, was actually, when we originally reviewed the RFPs, they were the one that was preferred, and now we're asking for the authorization to enter into a contract with them. The way that it's structured is, is the fee that you have before you is, is what we have is a, we have an estimate of an annual cost, and it's based upon the retirees, so the number fluctuates. So we have that number, and that's an annual cost over the four years of the requested contract.
Thank you, Gerald. Nancy?
Was it met with unanimous support where you landed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so what had happened was, yeah, so just to add to that, so we had the town parties agree that this was the, the firm to go with, and then the matter was brought before the Joint Retirement Investment Board, and they concurred that this was the, the way to go.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Gerald. Our next item, item number nine, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Just for the public certification, this is a contract with Engineering Associates for Environmental Consulting Services related to the East Trunk Sewer Wetland Crossing, based on the hourly rate schedule approved. This will, this is not to exceed $12,000. Funding for the contract is available through, on the bid number that's on the agenda that was posted. Motion approved, and seconded, is there? I have Gerald on, and I also have Mark Barnhart. Mark, do you want to jump on this?
Sure. Just very briefly, LaRero Engineering Associates, or LEA, was one of four firms selected by the town to provide on-call environmental consulting services under bid 202045, which included an hourly rate schedule. LEA is also the licensed environmental professional for the Fairfield Metro Center site, was responsible for designing and overseeing the installation of the Engineered Control System, or CAP, on that site. We're now in the process of designing improvements to the East Trunk Sewer that potentially interface with the Engineered Control System on that site. And so DNB had requested some additional help, or expertise, which LEA is going to provide, both in terms of designing the interface with the Engineered Control System, handling that, as well as any permitting questions that come up with DEEP. And so we're doing that under the on-call environmental consulting services arrangement. It's being paid for out of the Water Pollution Control Authority's operating budget.
Thank you, Mark. Nancy, do you have anything?
Other than WPCAT, does this go through any other board to, do you talk about it with Conservation, or is there any other sort of, yeah?
Yes, it will, it will require, you know, liaison with the Conservation Department and inland wetlands, some type of inland wetlands permit authorization as well.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further comment or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, for being on. Appreciate it. Item number 10, get a motion to to authorize purchasing authority to enter into a contract with Streamline Roofing for our Department of Public Works yard roof replacement of the salt dome, and can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, so moved.
And second, and this is not to exceed $69,999. James Ryan is on the WebEx. James, do you want to just describe this project briefly to the board?
James, I'm you. Sorry, the, the salt dome is set down at the DPW Yard. It's, it holds about 3,500 tons of salt. It was built in 2000, and it's the original roof that we're replacing. We've had seven contractors that submitted bids. Streamline is the lowest by 20,000. We've recently used them for Jackie Darrell Pavilion and We've recently used them, um, for Jackie Darrell Pavilion and the Congress Street Firehouse. Uh, we have a good working relationship with them. And, um, that's about it.
Thanks, James. Nancy, do you have any questions about the project?
No, if you have a good working relationship, there's historic precedent. It's, I don't have questions.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Our next item, um, is, uh, can I get a motion to approve Water Pollution Control Authority? This also requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider and act upon recommendation from the WPCA to approve $300,000 from their fund balance for design of the Fairfield Beach Road Pump Station in Forest Main.
So moved.
Seconded. And I know John Bodie is on. Hi, John.
Hi. Thanks for having me. And how are you?
Good, nice to see you.
Nice to see you all.
Okay, can you just briefly describe this project?
Yes, uh, as you know, the WPCA has been wanting to redo the Fairfield Beach Road Pump Station. It's the oldest pump station we have. And due to supply chain issues and all the nonsense that's going on, it's very hard to nail down a number. So without the document, we don't really have the ability to accurately estimate how much it's going to cost. We also want to have a look, see as to what's in the ground when we go to dig as far as contaminants and look at hardening the site being it's so close to Long Island Sound.
Yes.
So we figured with this design document, we could get a hard number, vote on that number and then move forward.
And this all went through, uh, up to this point, to the WPCA?
Yes, we voted on it Wednesday the 15th.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. I figured you were familiar with it.
Yeah, I am. I just didn't, I wasn't at that meeting and so I, I wanted to make sure that, for work reasons.
Sure. Um, okay, uh, no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
All right, our next item, uh, this is a motion to consider, um, this also requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled, uh, reauthorizing appropriation of 15 million to refund certain of the town's outstanding bonds and authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds to finance such appropriation. Sort of like a refi. Uh, all in, uh, I mean, can I get a motion? Sorry.
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded. And we have Caitlin Bossy on the line, um, who's going to present. Uh, if you could just describe this, um, and we also have, uh, attorneys from Pullman Account.
Hi, this is Caitlin Bossy. Um, I'm here to present the, hopefully the refunding of the 15 million in bonds is very similar to a refinance of a, of a mortgage or, or a house. Um, basically, the rates have decreased for a couple of our bonds. The issuance that we're looking at to refund are two bonds, one from 2012 and one from 2014. There's a little Q and A analysis that we sent out, um, around noon today that kind of gets into the details of it. But, um, basically, we're watching the rates really, really closely right now and if it comes to pass that the rates are, go low enough for us to, our, our realized goal is about 3% in savings, so we're hoping to save around $300,000 to $400,000 if we are so able to capture these rates at the right time. Um, again, these bonds are from 2012 and 2014. Um, we put together a little schedule of, um, the summary, the maturity dates are on the second page, starting from 2023, um, going forward for those two issuances. The call date, September 6th, so there's, um, a little bit of a window. We're trying to really, um, optimize our timing because we have a new issue, a new bond issue actually coming up this week. So a lot of the, where all of the work has really been done for the new issuance, so we can use the same ratings for these agencies and our, and the same official statement for the bonds, um, so for all the buyers to see all of who we are and what we do. Um, so we're hoping to really optimize this, um, if we get this approval in place by the three boards now, um, we can kind of get our hand on the trigger. So as soon as these rates make it feasible to kind of get this 2% to 3% savings, then we're going to go ahead and, um, and hopefully issue these refunded bonds. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Caitlin. Nancy?
I'll just say, you know, Caitlin, thank you. The, the words you're saying all make sense. It all, in theory, sounds like it makes sense and I just want to state for the record that I'm going to support this and approve it with the understanding that this still has to go to the Board of Selectmen, uh, to the Board of Finance, um, and the RTM, because I did not have a chance to review all the nuance of what you sent and everything sounds right, what you're saying to me, but, and I'm happy to have another check and balance in place through the Board of Finance and, and, uh, and I'm sure I would ask more questions, but I, it's fine for me to approve with that caveat.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's going tonight to, to the other two boards.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll just get this in place and kind of use all the work that we've done on the, the new issuance and then move forward.
Yeah. As I said, everything you're saying makes sense to me, but I haven't done any deeper homework, so.
No, and I think the town, you know, to that point, Nancy, the town is really lucky. We have some very smart people who we employ, um, to help us. You know, Caitlin is obviously 15 years with the town.
Yep.
We hire financial people and people who really have experience in this area, so we're lucky to have them, that's for sure.
Yeah. I certainly don't want to get in the way of it, of its ability to go down the pike, so.
Sure. Okay. Well, if there's no further, uh, discussion or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Sure.
Okay, um, I'm just going to give a brief update before we hit number 14, just, uh, for the public's knowledge. Um, I sent out an update last week, a fireworks-only display update, um, in my newsletter, which is going to be on Saturday, July 2nd. The rain date is July 3rd. Included in that update, which I linked to the town's homepage, there's a lot of helpful information from the Fairfield Police Department regarding parking and traffic and the Fire Department regarding fireworks safety. Um, I hope our residents will take some time to read that update because it has a lot of good information about, in there about traffic, closures, drop-offs, all that other stuff. I want to, uh, make sure to thank our emergency personnel who do, our average everyday citizens don't realize, realize the amount of work that they put into planning these large events for our community, um, to ensure that everyone is safe, so I do want to thank them. Um, and the fireworks will start just after dark, around 9:15 off a barge, um, on the water. And so, um, you know, you can check people who didn't, um, maybe potentially get the newsletter. I know it's, a lot of people do get it, read it, but it's always posted, that information is posted right on the landing page, uh, so that people can have that. And I'm going to send another update, um, as we get closer. Um, the, uh, I wanted to provide, I asked Sands for a quick update because I know Nancy, you had asked about COVID, so, um, uh, since he gave to me, since seeing a peak in COVID activity during the third week of May, cases, hospitalizations and deaths have been trending downward. Fairfield County is currently in the CDC's low community level category, with most counties in Connecticut being in the medium category. We recommend residents, uh, continue to follow CDC guidance, which includes staying up to date with your vaccinations and, uh, getting tested if you're not feeling well. Uh, for vaccination locations, there are numerous sites in Fairfield nearby as well and daily walk-in clinics in town. There are currently 10 COVID testing sites in Fairfield under contract to offer no out-of-pocket cost testing to our, our residents and all Connecticut residents. Um, and in the newsletter, there's always information on this and you can also visit the news section on the homepage for the website for further information. So I just wanted to give that update and also announce too that, um, we are going to provide a, a Penfield Pavilion update. We were going to present, but we wanted to make sure the whole board was together before we did that, so we're going to be doing that, um, when the full board is back, uh, together again. And, uh, do you have, I'm sorry, do you have any questions, Nancy?
Um, not about what you've said so far. I do just have one thing I want.
Okay, because I'm going to go to item number 14, but if you want to say something now, do you want to?
Sure, just to acknowledge that today we're celebrating Juneteenth, um, and I wanted to acknowledge that and, um, it was a reminder that I would love to get on an agenda at a date at some point to, to look and get an update from you on, on where we are with the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force, that, those recommendations and, and where, where things are there. Um, and just acknowledge that, that celebration of Juneteenth.
No, I appreciate you, you doing that and thank you. I, I did post about it, um, uh, on my First Select Woman page and, uh, obviously, um, it, it's been signed into law and I, my understanding is that, um, it will be in effect in November for our state, so, um, going forward. So, um, uh, as far as the Racial Equity Task Force, uh, recommendations, you know, we wanted to use, um, well, I had, I wanted to include in my budget, um, which didn't pass, um, the diversity, uh, part, part-time position, which, um, was, uh, eliminated, by the Board of Finance, so that was kind of a, not a good thing. Um, but we are, we have had a lot of, uh, like I've said, and I, I articulated quite a bit during the budget process, that our HR department was really in need of additional staffing, uh, because of the overwhelming amount of work that they have there. And unfortunately, um, that was not approved. And in addition to that, we also, um, have a change. So, um, come July 1st, our, um, current HR director is going to be exiting the position. We did hire a new HR director, but she is obviously just started and there's a lot of, for her to get up to speed on that's happening, um, in the HR department. So we have not yet, uh, had honestly the time to interview and use that ARPA funding and I'm hoping we can settle down a little down there because there's been so much, um, activity in that department, all the union contracts that recently got negotiated and settled. And so there's just a tremendous amount of work going on down there and there's, and we still are in need of, um, additional staff. So I'm, I'm trying my best to get there. But again, there is, there's a lot of work in that department. So hopefully, we can get around to this soon because, um, it seems like we can never seem to get our heads above water in, especially when it comes to HR, uh, issues in our town. Okay, item number.
Oh, yeah, and I'll just counter to say that I think there was a lot more to that than an HR discussion, so at some point, if we could get the, kind of more of a robust conversation, going to give people an opportunity to, to even weigh in on, on that ARPA money in terms of how, what that can, it's like, I just know that there's been some, uh, requests to, to have another engaging conversation with the community, so I'll just put that back and, you know, thanks for your update.
No, of course, and if anybody wants to email me, I haven't gotten any on that, but I'm happy to do that. But again, it, we wanted to do this professionally, um, and, and through our HR department. And so, um, but with all of, like I said, with the lack of staff in the department and the fact that there were so many contracts that just got negotiated and settled, it's, it's been a little hectic. And some of them were overdue from COVID, so there was a lot of retro work that goes into those, which I had no idea because I'd never worked in the HR department, but wow, it's a tremendous amount of work, uh, to do all that stuff. So, um, I'm going to move on to item number 14. I need a motion to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $67,143.20.
So moved.
Uh, I'll second. Is there any discussion on this item? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, we are going to be going into executive session. Um, so I'm, um, going to ask, um, I'm going to list the items and then we'll go into executive session. Motion to go into executive session pending litigation, Carol Keelone versus Town of Fairfield, uh, with Attorney Rick Aiken. Pending litigation with Thomas Thresher versus Town of Fairfield with Attorney Rich, Rick Aiken. Executive session pending litigation with Gregory Swindon versus Town of Fairfield with Attorney Aiken. And executive session pending litigation, Justin Egan versus Town of Fairfield with Attorney Catherine Krieger. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for those items?
So moved.
Second, and, um, we want to make sure that those people are still on. Um, Dave Kelly, if you're running, so we have Attorney Krieger, I believe I see there. I think Attorney.
Do we have to, all in favor?
This is Rick Aiken.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, Dave, uh, Attorney Aiken, are you on the, where are you? Thank, thank you, Dave. So, um, can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, before I go into our next motions, I just want to announce that no votes were taken in executive session. And I will now, um, uh, ask for a motion, um, for items A through C, uh, to provide counsel with the authority, uh, on their recommendations, which will be subject to the approval of the Administrative Law Judge.
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. On item number D, um, the mo, can I get a motion to approve, uh, the settlement agreement reached by both parties?
So moved.
Seconded. Is there any discussion on this item?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, if there's no other business, uh, before the Board of Selectmen, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time. Have a very good evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, take care now.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye.